For the 2016 proposed budget, I should say. Along with another booklet of revenue. They got a public hearing going on on December third today. Hey, nice. When were you receiving this? February twenty-fourth. We weren't. So we received it to twenty-fourth. Right, Thanksgiving was the, yeah. In baskets. They do this to us every year. They send it out right before. So anyway, that's good. Just for the public. Fire me. Well, they did this to us last year. They sent us to us, you know, and said, oh, the public, and they sent the day of the public meetings. By the way, there's a public meeting on this.
Who is this from?
The county mayor.
County Mayor.
Yeah, a delegation over there that runs the county.
We'll land next week. You'll pay the eight hundred and fifty thousand dollar. Be sure and sign your check.
Yeah, I know, that's, we'll avoid that one on the manifest.
Yeah, oops.
Yeah, we'll forget that one. The proposed 2016 budget includes a three point nine seven increase in the amount to be raised by taxes. Please remember that 2015 budget included no property tax increase, so. If it came down the road, it's come home to roost, so we jumped up on that. The proposed increase in taxes probably due to impact of discontinued proceeds from the LGC settlement. It resulted in seven hundred and five thousand dollars less revenue, so. Costs are up two point six seven percent, personnel costs up one point eight seven percent. If you have any better news.
Did you see their personnel costs are up one point eight?
Yeah, they had a, well, it's a contract with the sheriff's. Well, yeah, they had a contract with the sheriff's department, so they're gonna second year of that contract. But they found a mistake, and I think they got a negotiations going on with the nursing home and the corrections. So still may go up before we're done. To be determined, I guess. Uh, let's see, budget workshop memo, you guys are aware of that, right?
Yeah.
Uh, we have, just our, Dan Mellon is attached to plan for just one, but they set the pins. Has he been out, do you know if he's been out to cross the road to get this thing? Give me the evil eye.
I don't think so, because he's been going by my house the last couple of days.
And working on it.
What?
I think, well, according to this, he's set in.
Yeah, no, he's asking you.
Yeah, but has Jeff been out to do anything about the?
Oh, Jeff been out to work? No, not that I'm aware of.
Yeah, that's right.
Not that I'm aware of. According to that bill you just signed, he's working on a rangeway.
Yeah, that's what it sounds like. Drove home the boulder, they put three, five eights, set, and a three inch birch tree. And these two are pins, so.
You got, you got this real hole in the boulder?
Yeah, they couldn't set a pin.
That's right in the middle of where the road is. How long you think that boulder's gonna stay there?
Well, the road doesn't really go, it's, it's all, it's the wall. Well, that's the, that's what they claim to be the road, and I mean, it is, because you've got a snow wall there, so.
Well, it's filed, it's filed with.
How do we know it didn't come this way and go around?
Or the wall could have come after.
It's filed, the argument, they just say it's filed with Mary Mary County.
Right.
I mean, so unless you challenge what they filed, that's where the road's gonna go.
Well, it'll be, it's a classics road, so for us, it's.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Right.
If, if this was my property and I decided to develop it and I put the road in, I don't think I'd leave the boulder right there.
Oh, no, that's fine. Well, it's a temporary easement anyway, so it's, you know, after May first, unless we add a continuance on it, um, it's moot point.
Yeah, it's where they expire.
It expires, and it's, you know, it's just there, he, all the rules, nothing we can do. Well, he's once kind of, he come to the planning board with a subdivision, so.
Oh, really?
Yeah, I think this time next year, he hopes to have something moving along, as he would say, so.
Well, then maybe we need to extend the temporary for a little more time, but if he's gonna do something to improve that road eventually, then it should be a cul-de-sac or something at the end of it.
Exactly, so. Best for you guys to initiate from now on.
Did you see the Ted and Tom's assignments, our conciliation?
Yeah, we got a summary from True North, looks like we're doing okay on our. Reconciliations, you generally need to sign those. That's all as well. I think that's it.
Lot of colored ink.
Front door well. Did not see it. Did not see it, not from. Let's see if we back in here. And that should be the end of the mailbox. I'm gonna put this, uh, into very view. A little bit sort of bored. Well, it's in the mailbox, so you guys have anything to do with your work?
Oh, I have some stuff.
Yeah, the S and U is done, so.
We already did that, but I wanna talk about the library. Um, and I, and I am a little delinquent on doing my write-up only because my PC was here. So I didn't have access to the soft copy, but, um, what we talked about that day. And I probably shouldn't make you guys comfortable this, but I should. Yeah. Yeah, if you wouldn't mind, then they can kind of read my chicken scratching. The one, page one of the series is exhibit eight, exhibit three. Well, I know you only have two, mark one of three.
Oh.
The other page didn't have any changes on it.
Gotcha.
Or no notes. Um, the minor shoveling of the walkway and ramp, um, that would be during the open hours of the library. But the question came up, of course, around shoveling and snow removal, um, in a major snow event around, um, you know, the building, apparently the town is shoveling today. I don't know who is doing it, but they were telling me the town is doing it today. But they'd also like to be sure that all the fire exits are getting done, which means the two doors in the front of the building, that some sort of pathway is being created. I don't know if that's being done currently, I don't think it is, but the back of the building here where the handicap ramp is, and that apparently someone from the town has been shoveling.
Jeff could have probably answered that, most likely.
Yeah, I don't know. So that was one of the questions. Trash removal wasn't an issue. Um, the maintenance of the, um, the ground, the gardens around the library building. I, I spuck out the garden club here because, um, you know, they're a civic organization, certainly not under, you know, anybody's, um, you know, purview to make them do anything. So I made that a town requirement.
Yep.
So what's that?
The town, do you want to maintain the garden?
Well, yeah, if you didn't have the garden club doing it, who would do it? I mean, the garden club does it today, Ted, but they do it because they want to.
They do it out of the kind of.
But if they decided they were gonna stop, then what would happen?
Wha- wha- what are you talking about when you say gardens?
It's the greenery around, you know, where the monument stones are.
Around the edges of it.
Yeah, in the front, the very front of the building, where the monument stones are, the existing, um, garden spaces that have been there.
Around the bandstand too, I think.
Yeah, the flowers around the bandstand. I mean, it's all, I don't anticipate the garden club to even walk away from doing it, but we're not in a position to make them do it.
It's a town responsibility that we, that we coordinate with the firing club.
Right, yeah, yeah, and they've been doing it, and they, you know, think they're gonna stop, but. But that's, that's.
They do a great job, huh?
Yeah, no, they do, they do a real good job. So that's, um, that's what that was about. So I'm gonna move that line down to the town, and then, um, jumping down to line seven.
Yeah.
The higher contractor provide custodial services for first floor, the only thing they want to do is clarify that it's first floor, that's their responsibility. Carpeting, they had a question about the floors in that area. Apparently the floors, the wooden floors are cracked and splinted and in need of repair. They had a bid of five hundred dollars from someone to go in and repair that, but the question became, is that their responsibility or our responsibility as the landlords for the building? So I didn't know, um, where to li- where to put that, or does that come under, you know, building maintenance?
Let's say the floor's a crack and splintered where?
On the, in the, I don't know, I didn't go in and look, but, um, in the main part of the building, apparently.
Okay, I mean, I know, but like a portion of it was, whether it traveled at all, or anything.
I, I don't know, I didn't go over and look, so I don't know. I don't know what section of the building they were referring to, but they, um.
I didn't like that feeling, it's, were there the, the tenants, it probably, well, this would be a major repair, so it's probably on us.
So you think this is town? Um, if I get the chance, um.
I mean, if they wanna take it on themselves.
To go to, I'll go and get a look.
I mean, as part of their rent.
Yeah. All right, I'll find out, you know, specifically who that is.
Yeah.
Or we'll follow up with Andrea or somebody over there. So, okay, all right, um.
Because, I mean, well, we're gonna pay for it one way or the other, either.
Yeah, I know.
They're gonna charge us and, you know, their budget and.
They'll save money, who knows?
Well, I know last year, you on the budget, they have, they have a line for maintenance, and I questioned what that line was for, and, and they did mention that, that the floor needed to be repaired in places. So they put money in their budget for repairing the floor, so now they're saying, I guess they didn't repair it.
And they should be lapsing it back to us.
Right. Yeah, can, um, you think that was in last year's budget, Ted?
Oh, I know what.
I have a breakdown, I think.
Yeah, why don't you take a look at that?
Yeah.
Yeah, that'd be a good question. Okay, thanks, Lee. Um, number ten, uh, this has to do with the locks and the doors, um, they're looking for a new locking system, uh, in case of an emergency. Um, apparently those doors over there, um, I think that's similar to these, aren't they? Lock, or crash bars? But they're, they're.
They're the old style, though. They were like the ones previous to when we had that.
Were they?
Yeah, we had the brass bar that came across.
Yep, but they concerned with security, you know, today's environment, being able to, uh, basically go into lockdown and, and be safe inside the building. So I didn't know if that was something from their budget or something the town needs the budget for. Again, in my thinking, there are a tenant in our building.
Yep.
Kind of falls to the town. Because it's the exterior, you know, walls, basically.
Well, at least if we're paying for it, we have control over, you know, so it's not gonna cost us more than.
Okay, so I'll move that down to the town, and we'll have to figure out how we're going to proceed.
Yeah, four doors will, will work just fine instead of buying the Lincoln.
Yeah, no, no, I know, we gotta buy something that's adequate, so, yep.
Yeah, but we also don't need the, the hall locks either.
Brass, giant brass doors, nice.
With diamond螺丝.
Yeah.
Screws.
Exactly. Um, I didn't know if that should be maybe a CIP item, that was my note there, CIP. I don't know if the library's in that one, I don't even remember.
No.
No?
I didn't.
So maybe on the building maintenance.
Well, I remember CIP, it's fifteen thousand dollars.
Yeah, right, yep.
Yeah, so I don't think it's gonna cost that much.
No, I wouldn't think so, but maybe, um, you know, add it to the building maintenance line anyway. Okay, and then, uh, number eleven, there was a question on refinishing the floors, uh, the hardwood floors, what they're referring to there, if that was gonna be town or library. That kind of goes up along with the repair of the cracked wooden floor. So I want your thoughts on that.
Is that what they're saying, the four needs to be refilled?
Yeah, the hardwood floors. Maybe what we need to do is we're taking a walk around the building, one on one, and point out these things to us, we're a little better on this thing what they're referring to.
True. Uh, security alarm, so you get that crossed off.
Yeah, uh, because I think, um, it's already being paid for by the town, the actual alarm itself, not the maintenance, the monthly, this is not the monthly maintenance.
Don't the fire alarm?
Yeah, the alarm system, town.
That's a fire, not, not security, right?
Uh, I don't know, the way they.
It's both, I think, I think it's.
Yeah, the way they described it.
Security and.
Yeah, the way they described it, I think the town already owns that piece of it, because they just replaced it, but we don't pay the monthly fee.
We will now.
No, I think they are, don't they? Like, they currently pay the monthly fee, but we're different.
What comes out of the town?
Yeah, well, it comes out of the same place.
Wasn't John was here, um, though, with the CIP meeting, we asked. The, you know, the concrete, he's gonna be able to do it because he can do the blocks.
Right.
So the alarm's company.
Right, oh, it has to change.
Yeah.
Yeah, it goes to the alarm company that, uh.
We currently pay you that.
Yeah.
All Star?
Yeah.
The monitoring?
We don't pay for the.
The fire and the police.
We don't pay for it.
So it's gonna be an extra cost this, this, next year?
No, the library's been paid.
Right.
Right.
We give them the money to pay it, so I'm saying, it doesn't matter if we pay it or they pay it.
Well, that's, I mean, I know when we had that discussion a week or so ago with John, it makes sense that whoever is attached to it with All Star. We take and pay for the, um, you know, put it as a one-line item for all buildings, instead of having everybody, you know, and the, so police and fire and library and all this stuff, just, you know, have one lump sum somewhere where it is, for accountability.
Instead of making five checks, just one check.
Right, so you want to move all into one.
Right.
So that would come under town responsibility.
Except for the school, we pay for it anyway, so. I mean, that's, that's, to me, that we'd be, it could be a while we have government buildings, trying.
So, so all the, so the alarm systems, fire alarm, uh, security alarms, make that a town responsibility?
Pretty much is, anyways, yeah.
All right, all right. Now, um, does that include the monthly payment on the service too?
Yeah, the trouble we're talking about.
Okay.
So they have to reduce the apartment budget, you would expect that.
Right. Right.
Yeah.
Well, that, that, if we're gonna take care of the floors, that line that they have, or I think it's, I forget what it says, maintenance or something, that should go away.
Well, if they got maintenance, I could see them, like, painting or something like that, like they have here, and that kind of maintenance.
No, 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 well, I don't know if it was maintenance, but it was, it was taking care of the floor.
Right.
It was painful, the monthly, uh, alarm system.
Exactly.
I'll grab that budget from you.
Yeah, we should take a look at that, then.
Yep.
Yep, okay. That's a good catch, Ted. So that was kind of it for, um, for that, and then, um, on page two, the only thing that was kind of a question, again, it's snow removal and all of that, it falls under town responsibility. Uh, it's the ramp and the fire exits, the doors and that kind of thing, and like I said, I don't know how that's being taken care of today, but apparently it is.
I got a question for you. You got two under exhibit eight, you know, two trash recycling removal placement, and then under number, is it B, under five, you have trash removal and recycling. How can it be a library?
Uh, one is that them getting it out of their building, and the other one is us.
Basically, placement, placement doing.
Yeah.
All right.
Taking it out.
Yeah, yeah, they're, they're just kind of, so responsible to put it wherever, you know, if we go with a, um, trash hauler, probably, put it wherever, down the road someday, so that's what they.
Well, yeah, I mean, then I gotta go in the building and pull the trash out, or the garbage cans, I guess.
No, 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 so that was the intention there, Brian.
Yeah.
Um, now, as a side note, they pointed out there were some issues that they wanted to make aware of currently, and I think Lee's already looked at one of these, the broken window on the second floor, and, um.
Well, it just sounds like.
Broken, in what ways are broken?
I believe it's cracked, the glass.
There's a pane on the, over the front.
Yeah.
Um, portico, I guess, that one of the panes you were saying is broken.
Yeah, I haven't seen it, but I was told that there was a broken window, the glass, I don't think it's missing, but it's got a crack in it.
Gets a black and white.
Yeah, it's clear. Um, windows in general, I guess, need service, they don't, um.
Yeah, I don't doubt it.
Slide up and down easily, so they.
Probably need some, uh, glazing too, on several.
Yeah, maybe, I don't know, there are a lot of windows, I think, so I don't think need that, but I think the, um, the weight mechanisms aren't.
There is no weight mechanism.
There isn't violence.
There is.
Sure is.
No, whatever it is that helps them to move, I guess they're not moving promptly, they're, uh.
Yeah, they showed one of those over the other time.
The bottom one or the top one?
I believe the bottom.
Bottom.
Did you go over and talk with Andrea that day?
No, I just got, I just contacted Kyle, and he's gonna come in and give me.
Well, I remember when, um, I went over to look at that, that corner there, where they were looking to take and open up that one upstairs.
Yep.
In the corner, that, I think it was Andrea that showed me, she had, you know, one window that was really difficult, and I remember showing me that.
Yeah, I don't know how many windows, you know, and they just made a, a point of telling me there was an issue with windows.
Actually, the windows, the windows she showed me, it was one was right over that, uh, AC, right, that means they've raised up.
Yep, yeah, that's on the list too.
Yeah, pretty much on it.
Yeah, we've never been looking at. Then, of course, snow removal, that's always an issue everywhere here with the town. Um, the handicap space got moved away from the building a while ago, I'm not sure why, uh, but they would like to have it moved back to where it was previously located. And then, of course, paint on the building in general, and then, uh, we are.
Well, maybe you ought to get a hold of Jeff, maybe there's a reason why, I mean.
I think they moved that space because of something about snow removal.
Yeah, I, I don't know the reason, so yeah, we need to find out why that was.
Then they moved, then they moved the bar.
It was something about he couldn't put the snow somewhere, so he moved that space.
Yeah, wasn't that something to do with the, the book depository?
Yeah, it was some, some reason.
They've moved that.
Yeah, I think that might have been why they moved the handicap.
I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know either. Uh, we should find out, find out on that one.
Yep.
Okay, and then, of course, paint on the building, all of the, you know, the building needs work.
Yeah, that's all.
And then, uh, of course, they would like to have toilets upgraded. Okay, okay. And it's important, Ted, so, um, and then, of course, the air conditioning. No, they're not broken, I think they just.
And if they're not broke, don't fix them.
Yeah, exactly. So anyway, that, that was what we talked about, um, now that I've got my PC back, I will get this updated, and, um.
Well, that seemed, negotiations seemed to go a lot smoother than they were.
Oh, yeah, yeah, they, they were, uh, pretty, uh, very reasonable, yeah, and I'll schedule, um, a time, find some time to go over to the library when they're open and have somebody show me these areas of concern, so at least I can talk to them.
If it's early in the evening or something, they'll let us know.
Just for your information, all those windows on the first floor, the top window, they're screwed.
Yeah, they don't come down.
Sure does, they come down, and up and down.
Yeah, the bar.
Because they used to complain, because they used to always slide down, you're in the middle of winter, they're cold, well, yeah, no wonder you're cold, the windows are cold.
They can't close the window, for sure.
So we screwed it shut.
Yep.
Just to let you know.
Okay, I didn't, thank you. So anyway, that's what I said, I'll get it rewritten and, um, distributed accordingly.
Hopefully, they come to our meeting next Wednesday.
Yeah, 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 and, um.
They got anybody.
Yeah. Who'd you invite?
Uh, library trustees.
Okay, cool. Excellent. So that was it on that, and then I'm glad the school thing is, um, where it is, because that was been a lot of work, a lot more work than I would have thought.
Yes, thank you.
Um, once we get that signed off, then we can get the, um, snowball in the hands.
That's been ordered, right?
Oh, yeah, yeah, we got that on hold, right, yeah, and I wanted to make sure that, I was glad I called them up, because they were diminishing in availability, so we put one on hold.
And they deliver it, or we pick them up?
We, I haven't made arrangements for anything, so we can.
So they just have it down there?
They're just holding it, yep.
We have to pay for it, yeah.
No.
No, I didn't see the invoice.
No, they, they just wants to invoice us, but.
Yeah, I don't care when they invoice us, long as they hold it.
We'll keep it new up.
I just don't wanna be without.
Yeah, that's good, all right, yeah.
I don't think I had anything else, I think there was, um, oh, one more thing, um, I met with Viking Roof on, um, Wednesday. Because I spent some time, um, on the internet over the last week or so, because I had nothing else to do, and, um, I looked at, uh, there's a site out there called, I think it's called, um, Metal Roofing Alliance. What I was specifically looking for was, um, manufacturers, not so much installers, but companies that made different types of metal roofing, and, you know, steel as well as aluminum, and, uh, interestingly, interestingly enough, a lot of them come out of Canada. There's a few out of, like, Kentucky, Wisconsin, or Haiti, but the majority come out of, uh, Canada. So, um, in that search effort, um, I found Viking Roof, they're out of Hollis, New Hampshire, and they do, um, preservations. So that was the first that caught my eye, because most of the, um, suppliers that you see out there, they all reference, um, residential, um, none of whom seem to do anything big, but this guy, uh, this company here, they're currently doing a project over the Portman Naval Base, doing roofs over there, they're also doing the, um.
They're on a foot over there, of course.
Yeah, and they're doing the roof on the first church in Nashville, that's the big stone church up on top of Library Hill, that's been, I guess, an ongoing project, the church is doing it, um, over a period of years. And then, uh, they've done.
So they're very knowledgeable.
What town hall is that they did, was it, I forget, there was a town hall anyway, where they just did, um, you know, with one of these big spires and all that kind of stuff. So anyway, he, uh, showed up here and he looked at the building and, um, we showed him the photographs of the interior that we had, and he's got the mind, we haven't heard back from him yet, but we asked for some samples of different product, he's got a couple of ideas. They, uh, can fabricate their own, um, roofing, they have the machinery where they buy the coils, and then they fabricate their own, so, um.
Like, so it looks like slave or?
Well, that's the question, I'm not sure yet, uh, because I, you know, we told him what we were looking for, and he had another product that's a, a, like a shingle of some sort, or, you know, like a tile, like a roof tile. Um, I haven't seen it yet, so I don't know what, what that means exactly. The company that makes it is Carlisle, and, um, that's kind of the direction he was kind of leaning, I think, based on what we were telling him. So we'll wait and see, we get for samples, but I also sent around to everybody, um, the information that I found, so you can dig into it and educate yourselves a little bit, but there's so many choices out there, it's ridiculous. You know, and then the kind of, uh, finishes that they put on the metal and how it's put on, and, yeah, so it's, um, really involved, but, you know, like.
Yeah, you know, some have four-year warranty, some have fifteen-year warranty.
Fifteen, yeah.
What a whole, um, lots of steel.
Yeah, a lot, a lot, there was, uh, a fair amount of steel, but this, on, on some of those houses, the buildings too. But, um, you know, when you dig through it all, maybe if we contacted the manufacturer and got their list of contractors, we might find someone else who does preservation work. So I bumped into these guys, so they're, like I said, they're out of Hollis, they were very responsive, you know, I heard back from them right away. A guy showed up here, you know, with me and we leaned on, on Wednesday for a few minutes, and, yeah, yeah, they, they're pretty knowledgeable, but, you know, you gotta be a little wary, because they're trying to sell you something.
Yeah.
So, you know, you, you listen, gather the information, and go from there. So we'll see what we get for sample, anyway, so. So that's, um, that's what I said. Lee, did he leave you a card, the guy from Viking?
No, he said it was out in his vehicle.
Because I had his contact. Cool, that's all I got.
I did, I did email him.
You have the other?
Yeah, I could go with that pile, I thought. Your request. Just reading your email now.
It's in there.
Just, how do we get it?
It's probably attached to something else.
Went through all that stuff, I didn't see it, but I'll say it isn't. That's a little bit of a issue. So, so as I read that, you wanna take them carry three over?
Yeah, just carry three over so I don't have to use them in December. We have a cut over coming up and I'm not gonna be here a lot of the last two weeks as it is. It, it would, it wouldn't be good for the agency for me to be gone three days next week with the cut off. So I'll just use them up in early January and we'll be done. That way you don't carry that liability very long past the beginning of the year.
Three days is a whole lot.
So it's three days, I think.
Right, um, so you said you're gonna be here a lot for the last two weeks? I'm just gonna be here four days. Are those vaca, are those already scheduled vacation days, Jay? Vacation days, holidays, that's the. Yeah, I'm, I'm just thinking, you know, can, is there any way at all you could push them into that last week, but if they're already, if they're already using vacation time. You don't wanna be. I, I really don't wanna be away that long. Yep. I, I think it'd be rude for me to be there expecting with the cut off. Yep. So I do just use them in early January. Just be pushing it for a couple of weeks, we uh, that way the, the, the um, the liability of the, the vacation days is. It's not spread out through twelve months, it's seven weeks. Just takes the pressure off.
Three days, it's not like you're asking for two weeks or something, three days is a whole hell of a lot.
I'll use them in January.
Early January if you want or whatever. That personal, how do you issue that?
Well, I'm pretty good with it too.
Tell you that. If you've done it in the past, uh.
Yeah, yeah, we've done it in the past and, and we, we, and, and I don't know why it never goes in the minutes, but we tell the people that come and ask us. They either get paid for their vacation or roll them over. That we're not setting a precedent. This is a one-time uh, setup. And that they should be more careful in the future about using their vacation days. But every year, it comes to in December, we have people coming and asking us to pay for their vacation days or roll them over. Now, I, you know, I guess my feeling is, you had an additional full-time officer all year. And, and you couldn't schedule your vacation during the year? With all that extra help you had from previous year?
No. You get, you get extra help to, to do things during the course of the year. And I had times that I would have liked to have been off. I ended up here because I had, had to work on a Sunday or a holiday, cause I couldn't schedule. It isn't because I just put it off, so I don't feel like taking it. It's because it's a priority that, that I'm putting, I'm pretty much getting off.
Yeah, but, but you said, you, you said you wanted an extra officer, so you could have two officers on at night. They weren't weeks, I mean, there were weeks where you didn't have two officers, cause somebody was either sick or somebody else was on vacation. So you couldn't have scheduled your three weeks and have somebody take your place instead of having two people on at night, only have one?
I, I take my vacation days, a day here or a couple of days there. I put out my days for the good of the agency.
All I'm saying is.
And if I didn't do that, I'll take three days off the last two weeks of December.
All I'm saying is, it seems to me it was poor planning. If you can't plan, if you can't plan, you take your days off.
You follow what you like, cause it wasn't poor planning. It was putting the agency before, putting the agency first.
I'm looking forward to that. We allow the chief to roll those three days over to January. Discussion, any discussion?
I'll send it.
Nope.
Alright, a little favor, buddy?
I don't think.
Cause this, this just keeps on happening year after year. Might as well just throw, take the personal plan and rip it in half. I mean, what good is it? It's in the personal plan.
No, I understand what you're saying. So we're in a situation here where we need to take them.
And you're gonna be saying the same thing next year, and the year after.
Maybe I need to send my memos out earlier. And I've asked them to come to the board by December first to discuss it, maybe it should be something.
Right, so no, you can have it October.
They shouldn't have to come to the board. They should be able to plan on taking their vacations during the year.
Yeah, maybe.
Right.
That happens, so.
The um.
Do you know what happens?
Yeah, oh, I know, it happens, you know, every day. Um, but maybe that memo should go out the first of October.
I think it does go fairly early, but I'm asking them to, to meet with the board, cause they don't think they're gonna even take that time off by December first.
Doesn't. Well.
So from October to December, there's still a few weeks.
Yep.
So now we're hoping that some of the time will get used.
Well, you know, and, and to Ted's point, you know, where if this, you know, cause I, this, I know this keeps coming back every year.
Does.
But maybe in the letter, in, in next year's letter, maybe there's not an option to come to the board. You have to use your time when it's gone.
Yep.
You know, don't, cause if you give people an option, they're gonna take it. So maybe we take the option away.
Well, we need to redo that personal plan, that's probably where we need to go.
Yeah. Yep, and it's, you know, maybe it just has to be a hard, fast rule, so that, you know, I mean, we try to accommodate people because situations change every day, but um. But, you know, Ted's point.
Yep.
Uh, what's the point, you say?
Alrighty. Anything else? Alrighty. You all set?
I'm good.
Chief, you're up.
Uh, I wanted to let you know about the contract with Gostown.
Yeah, did they get, get back to you?
It hasn't gone in front of the board as of the last time I spoke with them. Um, they did, their, their town administrator, their town manager had some uh, trouble with the language. They were concerned that um, if they, if they budget expecting us to be there for the year and we back out with a hundred and twenty days notice. Now, it, it messes up their budget. So basically what they'd like is the same language that, basically the same language that we had with uh, with Bo. Where we, we'd have to notify them before October first um, for, to, to leave them the following year. That's, it was a budget thing, and it, it kinda makes sense, yeah, and that's split up.
Well, if I remember right, didn't they, they had a thirty day window in their original one? And then we asked for the hundred and twenty.
Yeah, cause it gets, it was a both ways.
So, so now, so now they want to, to do something different?
It seemed to me that they didn't have that thirty day language in there at all. If that's something that our attorney had added, no?
No, I thought that was in this, I thought.
No, that's what they had, they had in there, thirty days.
Yeah. So that, that's kinda what I remember anyway, but I thought they had a thirty day window and we asked for a hundred and twenty. We would have settled for ninety and uh.
Yeah.
Well, I think my concern was, uh, thirty days, if they decided to cancel the contract with us.
That's interesting.
It would only give us thirty days to go out and find somebody else.
Yeah, it's not much time.
No.
So, that's why we asked for a hundred and twenty days. But I don't think, I mean, if, if, that's what they're worried about, we can stipulate.
Right.
That the hundred and twenty days is towards the end of the contract, not in the middle of the contract.
If it would work for you, like, we just ask the same language that we have with Bo and.
Yeah, they want, yeah, no, I know what you mean. Cause, cause, you know, they originally.
Well, on November first, it's technically ninety days.
Yeah, cause the arrangement you had with Bo was like that. You had to tell them by October one if you're gonna continue. And I, and I, and that worked okay for the town.
Yep.
Yep.
If, if both of those, both of those towns have, I believe they have the, the July to June fiscal year, so it gives them time to be a plan.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I don't have a problem with that, I think that works well.
Yeah, I mean, cause that goes both ways. If they're gonna tell us to go away, then they do the same thing, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah, I can't see right now where we would cancel the contract with them. I mean, it's a pretty good deal.
No, I can't.
Yeah.
I would more worry about, what if they decide they don't want to do it with us? You know, I was trying to protect Dunbar more than I was Gostown, but.
But you think they would be okay with that language that we had with Bo?
I think so. I think so. I mean, I can pipe up the suns over there and see what's said.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause they meet next Monday, right?
Yeah, they meet on Monday, so I would have to come tomorrow morning.
I feel this one might be copy that. Yeah, no, that makes sense. I mean, cause it, Ted, was, he caught that, there was only thirty days, but that was for either party to take and drop the other party. So, you know, thirty days doesn't give a whole lot of time to scramble, to be scrambling.
No, that's not a time.
They were okay with, um, potentially with the language regarding if we don't take them, um.
Don't read them.
Yeah, no, we don't appropriate during the town meeting, I mean.
The feedback I got was, that was the only, that one paraph- uh, one paragraph.
The hundred and twenty day.
The only issue. It was, yeah.
Yeah, cause the other one is just protect us because of being the contract, being a multi-year contract, we have to have some, or else we have to go out in a whole different way at the town meeting. So, but, yeah, you guys agree with the, the language before?
Yeah, oh yeah.
Yeah, we've worked with that before.
Yeah, we've worked with that before and that seemed to be just fine.
In fact, we invoked it.
Yeah, well, I think it kinda protected us a little bit better.
So.
So, yeah.
Yeah, if they agree with something like that, that's give it a shot.
Yeah, if you can.
Okay, I can do that, cause um, the other thing I wanted to tell you is, is cutovers is this coming Tuesday.
What?
Our cut over with the, the Gostown is Tuesday.
Tuesday. The cut over with Gostown.
Oh, 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 oh.
That's Tuesday. They're gonna um, they're gonna take wear first and then, once that's, once they're over and everything's running smooth, then they'll take us later in the day. Cause we're gonna be a much smaller.
Are they doing both of you in the same day?
In fact. Yeah.
Really?
Well, they're gonna bring in the contractors, take care of the phones and all that other stuff, so it's more cost effective to do it all at once.
Excellent. How do we handle the phone line situation? You got a better price?
Yep.
Uh, this was one of the things I was gonna tell you about. I can give you the uh, the Reader's Digest version of the uh, the radio project in, in public session, or I can give you the uh, more detailed version, but I don't want it to be public. So I'll leave that up to you, what you'd like.
Take your poisons, gentlemen, what would you want to do?
I don't need that.
Um.
The Reader's Digest.
Do we have the Reader's Digest and then if we need to have more detail, we can.
Reader's Digest is, I still don't have a firm price. I still don't have a, 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 a firm date where we can do this. And it's gonna run us anywhere between, say, two hundred and five hundred dollars a month for the lease line.
You're kidding me?
Two to five hundred?
That's what they told me. I don't have a firm price, but I, it was, it was in a conference call the other day and they started talking about four to five hundred dollars a month. I said, we can't afford that.
For what?
It's three thousand dollars a year for a leased car line. So, I, I'm waiting for them to, to get back and then hopefully they'll come back with something that's, that seems reasonable. That seems very unreasonable.
Yeah, that, that's.
I mean, I'm not in the business, I don't know what's involved. There's something to do with, you got company A, company B, and they have to be able to tie the lines together someplace between the central stations or, or something.
Is Dunbar Telephone involved in that at all?
Yes.
They are.
Yeah, that's what the B is coming in.
But I can give you, I, I would go into more details in, in non-public.
Okay, yep, yep.
If you're gonna do that. Um.
I got a friend that worked for Fairpoint.
I, I am looking at some alternatives. And again, that's something I would talk to you about in non-public, not public, not public session.
Okay.
You would worry with.
Yeah.
I, I, that's one of the things I'd ask about.
I'm thinking of stringing a couple tin cans. Kidding me?
Oh yeah.
Jeez.
Run our own couple there.
For that kinda, yeah, for that kinda money, yeah.
Wow. On, on the brief end of things, the uh, the defibrillators. Um, I'm waiting for a medical, a medical approval letter to come, maybe it might have come today, uh, maybe tomorrow, and I'll order those. We went with the defib techs and those are gonna come in about, about five thousand dollars, so we're gonna use about half of what was appropriated. So we'll, there'd be a bunch of.
Now, these are the defibrillators with the battery, it's winter hardy and all that good stuff?
Well, the, it's winter hardy to an extent. The, the issue is so much the batteries. The, the one that I carried in my previous job had a gel battery, and that's why I used to freeze up. One of the issues they have is with the pads. If the pads freeze, that's a problem too. So there's really no getting around that. We, we just gotta be kinda mindful of that. Temperature's gonna be, it's gonna be an issue with that.
So they also have to take that piece of equipment out of the car every time?
Yeah, yeah, during the winter, if it's gonna be a hot freeze, probably. The problem is when you start taking in and out. You have it in the building, you get a call, you run out your call, you get to bring it with you. You're out the parking lot when the call comes in.
Yep.
And now you, you're arrived at the scene, you don't have.
They don't have, uh, just out of curiosity, just thinking kinda like way outside the box, they don't have like a uh, a case for those things where. You could plug into like a simmered lighter and it actually has a thermostat on it and keep it warm in the wintertime?
I never heard of anything like that.
I mean, people, I know they make coolers, twelve volt coolers that you put in your trunk for when you go shopping, they'll take them.
Just get twelve volt heating pad, right?
Yeah, twelve volt heating pad or something.
When it's something like that would draw and now you get it to battery issues.
I don't know.
Well, obviously, that's why you have thermostat, I mean, you know, just keep it, keep it a, you know, an even key, it's like forty degrees or something.
I, I, it's a neat idea, I hadn't, I hadn't heard of that.
I don't know, I'm just throwing out there. Well, if you, if you don't find them, you can add it.
Yeah, there you go, there you go.
Put a couple solar panels on roof for the chutes and the outside.
I guess I covered everything. Well, the, the only other thing is the uh, we have to contact Fairpoint to court over the, the line, um, our. Our dispatch line, the one people call for the dispatch line. And that, I guess we've been paying the bill, but I don't get the bill and I'm not on the list, so I, I gotta get. Authorization to get on that list, so I can make that order.
I can do that, I think I've got the list.
To come back. Yeah, I'd, I'd like to get that bill delivered to the police station, so we can go through the normal procedure, pay in it. I had no idea that uh, that we were paying that. I, I, I looked at it the other day and it's definitely coming out of the budget, so I didn't know.
It's coming out of your budget?
Yeah, I looked and I saw on the uh, on the log form, it was the uh, we were making payments at Fairpoint. So that, you know, just keep continuity, really shit onto the P D.
That's a good policy to have, you guys sign off on your bills anyway like that, so.
Yeah, that's just, probably just been doing that forever. Nobody ever really thought of it, so.
Anything else?
Last but not least, uh, Laura graduates from Dear School next Friday. So you may see uh, some forty hour weeks, or it could be a little, little bit of overtime this week and next week, and then she's fine. It's just the nature of the school, you can't scratch it out for three weeks.
Right.
I don't know what you're gonna see with this school, you know? You see it, you know, don't be surprised.
It's just a glitch, you know, so.
It's because it's a forty hour school she's working, so, that's a, so long days and stuff. That's about all I can think of.
Alright. When does the Dear program start with the school?
Yeah, it won't be till the spring sometime. They kinda work it in when, when it gets best time, so.
Nice. Thanks, Chief, though. Anything else, Ken?
Nope, I'm good.
We're in the public comments section, so, taking you first as the department head.
Yeah, that's okay.
Woody, you inhale?
Vic.
Mark?
Uh, well, you know, I, I watched a presentation tonight.
Yeah.
And I heard the comments on our webpage, or, that we currently have. Uh, there's certainly, and I'm speaking as a taxpayer. As everybody got their tax increase, I don't have a problem with paying a little more if I'm getting something for my money. I don't think that's what I want, when I've listened to a lot of departments and their needs and we can't meet all their needs. So, just as a taxpayer, that's a big concern I have. It's not on the top of my radar, so.
I understand.
You know, um, so, can I say something?
Yep, your turn, if he's done.
Yeah, I was uh, online today on Tom's website actually, and I noticed the minutes weren't in because I, I wasn't here for that meeting. I was out of town. Minutes for the last selectmen's meeting?
Yep, that's cause we were off last week and had been approved. So I can't post them as, as draft, but I didn't do that.
Yeah, okay, great. And I did. Yeah, okay, but, but I just, I was curious and I went to look and they weren't there, okay. But I did notice the cemetery trustees meetings, semesters were there. How did those get on?
They do their own.
We post them.
Ah.
Yeah, we're, we're one of the few Leo that know how to do that.
Right.
And it's not an easy task either.
I was on vacation too. I was on vacation too.
Yeah.
Wednesday, then Monday, Thursday, so...
Okay, so anyways, I, so I read yours. So what's this gate gonna be here in, in Santa Cemetery? Is it that side or that side or what?
Both, uh, actually both.
That one initially and then we have...
Potentially one of...
Potentially that one.
For this one we have.
So what's that cost for us?
We don't have the pricing yet for...
Is it fourteen hundred bucks for this one?
For this one here, it was like fourteen hundred.
And we're looking at estimates for that one.
Alright. Is it gonna be the same ugly plastic as the, the others?
No, 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 no. No, when we looked at that last year, um, we looked at, I, I don't, I, I know I don't have all the right, uh, terminology here, but it was, um, like a black, um, aluminum anodized. I'm sure I have that wrong, but it was something a little fancier. It's not a, a white, you know, string.
Is that just for like looks or is it for the purpose?
No, it's for a purpose. The purpose is because we need to, um, lock the gates.
Can you just put a black chain across there? That's cheap.
You could.
Could, but...
It's just for that period of time.
Well, a, a couple of years ago, we had someone that decided to plow into the cemeteries, you know, because there was snow and they wanted to get to a gravestone. That's a no-no.
Yeah, right, no, you're...
Uh, when we lock, when we close the cemeteries, that means it's closed, that, you know, it's taking notice that anybody's in there. You know, get hauled out.
Like, uh, the one at East End is locked now, right?
Um...
It was closed last week when I was there.
The gate's closed. The, the gate, that one stays closed.
The gate's closed.
Yeah, oh, it stays closed.
Yeah.
But you can open that one from...
Okay, right, right, yeah, right.
We, we can lock that one, we just haven't put a lock on it yet.
I mean, I...
Did that one just...
It's gonna cost like, what was the one down there, something like that, down, uh, the cemetery out at the...
Pages?
Yeah.
That's the one that got plowed in, that people were plowing into it.
Yeah, right, I know that there. I could see tire tracks there in the snow, yeah, but why does that cost?
I'll see what the Santa Claus was on the rooftop. It's gonna be identical to the one we're thinking of out there.
Yeah, we're looking at getting the same kind of gate.
I think those were like fourteen hundred bucks.
Hmm?
They got, I think those were like fourteen hundred each.
For both, for singles?
For both those gates.
Same kinda gate, yeah.
Twenty-five hundred, twenty-eight hundred, so...
Wouldn't it be better to spend it on the repairing the cemetery instead of the gates? We could, like I said, a chain, a black chain across would look just as fine, really cheap. You could take that money and put it towards the stones. They could use a lot of work.
Oh, it'd work though.
I know, but that's costing us too 'cause we gave you money for that.
Yeah, definitely.
That's only doing a little piece of that, right? So if it, the money there could've go towards the stones and we wouldn't have to keep coming to the town for more money to repair the stones.
Now, what's gonna stop anybody from putting a simple chain across there, just cutting a chain and doing what they wanted to do?
Well, they could do that with those cheap plastic things too, so...
Now, those actually got metal behind the plastic.
Yeah, I'll bet you that somebody can get through it if they want.
They could, but it's gonna take more hours.
Somebody must get through it.
Come on, it's right in the center of town. Who's gonna wanna hoof around right here? Really? I mean...
But for that one like that, it's also part of the aesthetics because of the, uh, you know... Like the work that you did on the, the...
Well, right, now, I, that's why I was hoping it wasn't gonna be any ugly plastic, number one. But I mean, if you just use a black chain in the winter.
Right.
It wouldn't look bad.
But then again, conversely, when we did, when we had you do all that nice work that you did on the, on the, the, uh, the fence there, you know, the wood and the granite and all that, we could've just easily gone with, you know, a paintbrush and some paint and leave the crappy old wood up there.
Yeah.
And put the money into the stones like you just said, so...
Right, and I did, I did mention that to you guys then, that you could've put that money towards washing the, cleaning the stones and doing repair work. I did mention that at that time. You guys wanted the fence and it was either me or hire somebody else, so I decided to do it, you know?
So the fence was a part.
But I mean, I'm just looking at, the most important thing is to deal with fixing all those stones. And I see in your, in your minutes that you were talking to people, uh, a company about fixing stones and, and, you know, corner stones and what have you, so, you know?
Well, I mean, this conversation really should be had during the cemetery trustee meeting.
Well, I'm here.
So you're welcome to that meeting if you, yeah, I know, but that's true.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm reporting to the selectman right now.
Yeah, the selectman have no purview from the cemetery trustees.
Well, why don't you guys go ahead and step down?
Over the budget, but...
Yeah. Yeah, well, basically what I'm talking about, my taxes, the budget. That's why, that's why...
Yes, on cemetery trustee meeting as well.
But, yeah, I know, but if the selectman here, you're talking about the budget hearing next week and, uh, so... I won't be here next week unfortunately, 'cause I'd like to be here. Then I guess I'd have you sit here and I could talk to you. But this is the way it is, so... Uh, so anyways, that's, that's what I thought about that. And then, so then I was listening about the lighting, you're talking about the lighting here. Where's the west end? There's gonna be a pole on the west end of the parking lot or...
Well, if that's south, that's north. That's west and that's east.
Yeah, right.
So west would be...
Yeah, towards thirteen.
Right.
So where's that one gonna be located?
You're gonna say there was gonna be one located there.
Oh, well, you said two.
No, that's what was suggested, we...
We're gonna start with one.
We're gonna start with one, right, in that corner right over there.
Oh, okay, alright, I thought, I heard there were gonna be two now.
He did, John did say that. And I, I was wondering the same thing. I don't remember talking about a pole.
Well, he, uh, sets up with electrician who wanted to do, he had, you know, threw a diagram and wanted this.
Yeah, right, right, right.
And I was thinking two of them and that's when I sent them over.
Well, sounded like a two different contractors that he's talking to with two different approaches also.
Right.
So, but we haven't seen that.
Alright, 'cause I, that's what I was wondering, it's like, now wait a minute, we went from one to two again and now we're getting two. And you haven't, I thought you were gonna put it out on the west end, that's what I thought. 'Cause I'm wondering, why wouldn't we need one out there?
Probably for all the people to park on our lawn.
Yeah.
Well, if we're gonna do that, then we should've had, gone, followed this top state study and put the crosswalk in and have a light here like they had suggested.
No, the state actually won't put a crosswalk in there.
No, a crosswalk across to the church.
No, they won't do it.
I, I thought the state shut that down.
They did.
Yeah, we have to do a lot of, of...
No, they didn't, they didn't shoot it down. They, they gave us requirements.
Yeah, there's a lot of it.
And a lot of the requirements, but you would need a light.
The lighting, yeah.[1556.34]